The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.
And we have another minute to go and then we'll get started. I just want to say from the outset that we have a 6:30, another 6:30 hearing and I'd like to start that, given the nature of it, at 6:30 sharp. So if we're not done this, I'm going to ask that we recess it and we'll come back, but I do want to start the next one promptly at 6:30. Thank you all for being here. I know we all know who you are and probably most of the public, but I'll have you identify yourselves in a moment. And just for the public, we are here for a public informational session with the police chief and fire chief to provide the city council and public with an update on general operations of each respective department. So I will ask you all to identify yourselves and we'll go from there.
Robert Sidlo, Fire Chief.
Aaron Kennedy, Police Chief.
And Craig Long, Deputy Fire Chief.
Okay. Counselor Frida, I believe that you had asked for them to come down, so I'm assuming you have some questions about the operations and COVID and those things surrounding, so I'll let you get started.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, guys. How are you?
Good.
Yeah, I wanted to get an update on it. There's been so many things happening in the last year, two years, even a little beyond that, and we haven't really had an update of the departments. Looking at some of the information coming down, especially from Chief Sidlo, with the situation of the Fire Department with military and people out hurt, COVID-related issues, there just seems to be an awful lot. So I wanted to get an update from you, even as far as COVID goes, as well as just general trends in the department for the past few years that you see happening and where the department is in regard to that. If we'd, might as well start with you, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you. You can hear me correctly. Okay, thank you. Thanks, counselors. Fire Department, I guess this was precipitated by the request for additional overtime money. As you know, the city has chosen to...
Let me interrupt you for a minute. That wasn't the reason I requested.
Okay.
It was what the overtime money was for, the multitude of issues that I just mentioned.
Yep.
I wasn't, it wasn't an objection to the overtime, that's understood.
No, and I didn't, I didn't mean it that way. I didn't take it that way.
Right. I just want to be sure that everything you mentioned is there, I think it's something that we need to hear about.
Sure. So it was basically because, you know, the need for more overtime money, which is the way that we fund running the department. So for some of the newer counselors, the city over the years passed comptroller was, they felt it was cheaper to pay overtime than it was to hire more employees. So the Fire Department, we have roughly 80 uniform members. Sometimes we fluctuate up to 82 and then sometimes we'll fluctuate. If we have retirements, down a half a dozen in a year and we'll replace them as we go. Size of our Fire Department is the same size as it was in 1970 when the Fire Department was working 56 hours, three shifts. And as the time with a lot of the workforces, the Fire Department and the city changed to a 42-hour work week schedule with four shifts. So that 80 people used to be divided into thirds and now it's divided in quarters. So we've run with those 80 and as the 70s and 80s have gone on, more benefits to workers, vacation, personal days, sick leave has probably gone up since way back then. Two parents working, sometimes one parent has to stay home with a sick child or whatever. So the benefits added, the, what I talked about was the groups being split up. As the overtime has increasingly gone up since my tenure on the Fire Department, when I became chief around eight years ago, we started experimenting with staffing the second rescue. After two or three years of proving to the comptroller and the mayor that the funds would staff a second rescue, it was determined to do it on an overtime basis. To back up a little further was, since 1970, we, there used to be three men on the ladder prior to 1970, but with the changing of the work shifts, it went down to two. In the 90s, it was, the city was able to fund it back up again and now we staffed a ladder truck properly with an officer and two firefighters and that was done on overtime. So the overtime, since we've staffed a second rescue in the past eight years, has basically gone from a million, 1.2 million to we're around $2 million a year. It just so happens that the revenue of the ambulances with a Medicare reimbursement program we participate in is we're bringing in about $2 million a year. So the staffing of the second ambulance, the staffing of the first ambulance is basically being paid for from the ambulance receipts and not from the tax base. The tax base is basically paying for the fire service. It's just my way of cutting it up, not that that's how it's set in the budget. So here we are with COVID. COVID started a couple of years ago. Our responses actually went down a little, but our call time went up because taking care of a COVID patient required us to gown up, wear a mask, decon. So our runs went down a little, but our time on scene and the time at the hospital increased. The way COVID impacted our overtime was, we have a lot of members that either tested positive or were, had a family member that tested positive and had to quarantine. Deputy Long, one of the reasons I requested he come tonight was, his position, he ran the guidelines for COVID. So he daily read what the CDC, the doctors, what the news was telling us to do for COVID and implemented into the department, which required a lot of members having to, like I said, either quarantine or call in sick. And this has been going on for two years. When the vaccines first came out, we saw a big decrease after that four, five-month period, which went through early last summer and into this summer, and then this fall and winter, it's been heck again. The issues we're also having on the department is, in my tenure is, the way we fight wars has changed. Where the full-time forces used to fight the wars, now the government has chose to use the Guards quite a bit. Well, a lot of the Guards members are police and fire. So we used to have members that were in the Guards back when I got on in the 80s and they would do their weekends in their two weeks in the summer, basically that's it. I lost a member last year for a year. I have another member going away in April for a year. Their deployment time is usually nine to 11 months. There's usually a month at the beginning and a month at the end that they're on the government's books, they can't work for us. That's, the military, the city council, and it's a good thing, has adopted rules throughout the years for the military that they get more time off. That's, that's not a benefit, but it's given to by the city where they're not using their own time. So they now get to do their trainings on weekends, which is, they get excused from work before they used to have to get swaps. So that's, that's an additional cost. We, seems to be, ever since I've been on the department, we've never had a full complement of people because there is always somebody on long-term injury, long-term illness. We've, throughout this past year, I had a member that hurt himself in November on duty, returned in October. I had a couple of members this summer that were at illnesses and were out for July, August, September. With the new building down there, we've been doing a light duty, so they've been able to come back to work. They provide a service, it's good for them, but it doesn't count towards our staffing because they can't go on runs, they're not medically cleared. I've had a member this summer that has an illness that was trying to come back to work and then has since retired. I had a member that started the budget year for a position that two weeks in it decided to retire, so we've been backfilling that position on overtime. We're under civil service. Civil service has started a new program where they're going to have exams every year, so they're merging list. So we've been in lockdown since November that I can't get a list until March 15th because the yearly, they're merging list. Before, they used to have a list every two years and then it, you'd get locked down for a couple of months while one list was expiring and a new one was taking over. And now they're locking us down yearly. This is the first year, it seems. They're going to lock us down yearly for two or three months, so we can't get anybody, we can't get a list till the middle of March. By the time we do the backgrounds and the health checks and the physicals, we probably won't be able to get them on board until, you know, June or so. So that's all the negative things. Good things is we're doing our own academy, which is really helping us get individuals trained faster and cheaper. We have a great dedicated workforce through this COVID. Counsel Frida, I can't say enough. The calls that they've gone on, the number of calls, unknown whether they're COVID or not, definitely COVID calls when we get there are dispatched to it. They've had to gown up, mental fatigue, stress, they've had to do homeschooling, so they haven't been available for the overtime, so we've had to start force hiring this year. Deputy Long, want to add anything?
Yeah, the guys and girls have done an outstanding job going on the calls. It is, you know, creating a little bit of a toll on, taking a toll on them with the overtime and backfilling those positions. We, you know, we, in my career, we've never had to force hire. We used to fight always getting the overtime, now it's a lot on them. So they are, they are filling it, they are getting the job done. COVID has definitely taken its toll, it's gone through our department, especially this last variant where we had quite a few guys. Luckily, they didn't have to stay out as long, but it's, it's run through their families and things like that, so we've, you know, had to backfill that as well. But all in all, they, you know, they keep coming in, they keep plugging away, they keep going on the calls. Our calls have definitely gone up. We, as the chief said, we went down a little bit for a couple of months at the beginning. I think, quite frankly, people were afraid to go to the hospital because they didn't want to, you know, get it. Now our EMS calls are up 350 this last year, or a little bit higher than that. So we're, we're still as busy as ever and, but they do a good job, so.
To comment on the ambulance calls, Mr. Kennedy, the police chief Kennedy's father, Mr. Kennedy, Paul Kennedy, everybody knows him, so I get a lot of data from him. In 1980, there was, I started in 81, so 1981, there was 1,770 ambulance calls. We're projected to do 6,400 this year. We have one ambulance, we have gone up to two. Society has changed a lot of mental health. I think in the 90s, there was TV shows, we educated everybody to call 911. So there's generations that have grown up that you call for the ambulance and you go to the hospital, whereas when I got on in prior, it was the true emergencies. So the need for service has increased greatly and now with department. And a lot of those calls, mental health sometimes with the police, we could be on scene for an hour or two. We may have to wait for a parent, we may have to wait for a doctor's order before we can transport them. So there's definitely, times have changed and it's, it's taken a toll on the members as far as, they have to change the way they work before, we used to rush, rush back. Now their, their report writing takes longer, their, their level of care is spread out and longer. We have to train them on different aspects. When Craig and I were on the ambulance, it was more of a first aid, stop the bleed, airway, get them to the hospital quick. Now there's a lot of in the, in the street paramedicine. We're not paramedics, but what our EMTs are doing are in between what we did in a paramedic. They're, they're listening better to breath sounds, they're deciding to take someone to Worcester quicker than, you know, we would have went to Leominster. So the level of care has increased. We talk all the time, it's impressive. So the, so all the investment that the city has made, you know, through the mayor's office, through the city of council, with the ambulances, with our training, the facility that we got, it's definitely paid great dividends to the level of service in the citizens. It's, it really has.
Okay.
It's, a lot of it is the, it comes back to the overtime and the trying to get to the guys. We spend an awful lot of time on that. I would love to have a bigger workforce. I don't think it's the answer to all of the issues. I understand that the city, it's, you know, I calculate it all the time. Our firefighter's overtime rate is per hour, is what it breaks down for a firefighter with all the benefits, retirement system, paying in the OPEB, health insurance, it's right around the same thing, it's like $49 an hour when you break it down. So I understand the comptroller and the mayor's reasonings, the liability of not hiring, you know, more people, but we're, we're at a critical point where we are forced hiring during a pandemic and it's, it's stressful and, but again, some positive is, we've, we've got enough ambulances, they're in great shape, we have plenty of first aid supplies, we've got great training, we bring in outside trainers, we have a great rapport with the police, the 911 system, the calls come into the, crews are getting the information to us so we know what we're going into. We have a great system there. And then the fire side is, we just, we've taken what the generations before have done and we keep investing in it through training and, and equipment and knowledge and trying to pass it on to the, the new generation and I feel very good in that aspect too.
Chief, if I could...
Angeloini.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop you there and I'm going to ask that we, we have somebody that's supposed to be here at 6:30, so I'm going to ask if you can hold all those thoughts and we'll resume this portion of the hearing after we have our 6:30 hearing. So Chief, I know Fire Chief, you need to stay and Craig, you can as well, it's up to you. And if the police chief can just hold on a few minutes and then we'll get to you for some questions. So at this time, I'll ask, is there any representatives from DJV Oil here if they'd like to come in? This is a 6:30 hearing for a notice to appear, 645 Lancaster Street, flammable storage violation. And I'm going to ask the chairman of Legal Affairs to conduct this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Have a seat. Yes, please. This is a hearing for the Legal Affairs Committee regarding 645 Lancaster Street, a notice to appear on a flammable storage violation. I'm the chairman of the committee, my name is Peter Angeloini. The other two members of Legal Affairs, the second member is Counselor Mark Bedanza and the third member is Counselor Pauline Cormier. I would ask you, sir, to introduce yourself, please, to the council.
My name is Elvis Velez, I am the president and the owner of DJV Oil Recycling. There might be some missing that I just want to clarify. I stepped out for like a month or so and, you know, I had to ask someone, you know, to take my place and he was able to communicate with the Fire Department, but it was within my authority, just to clarify. Yes, Elvis Velez, I am the president, owner of DJV Oil Recycling.
All right, Mr. Velez, well, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
I'm going to, at this time, read into the record, the report that we received from the Fire Department on the incident and then I will, I'll read the response from the gentleman from your company. This report is dated January 11th, 2022. It states, responded to assist engine two when they requested additional resources. Upon arrival, a spill of food-grade cooking oil was observed on the ground. The spill was estimated at 50 gallons. The spill had happened while transferring the oil from the building for recycling. Upon my arrival, the company had already responded with a vacuum truck and was cleaning the oil. Dyking had taken place to prevent the oil from going onto the main road and booms were also set up. I contacted the DEP and was informed that a reportable quantity of this type was 55 gallons. The DEP would contact the company to ensure cleanup was complete. The DPW was also on scene and planned on spreading sand upon completion of the cleanup. It says below, company was Peterson Oil Company, Worcester, operator Brian Mayotte, trailer MA 66162. Then I have a response from one...
Mr. Chairman, there's also another portion below that as well, from the original report.
Did I miss it?
If you could read that.
Oh, you are correct, Mr. President. My apologies. Engine two was dispatched, arrived and investigated. A reported oil spill on the roadway at 646 Lancaster Street. Upon arrival, a tanker truck was in front of the property with a 600-square-foot pool of food-grade waste oil in the driveway abutting the street. Peterson Oil Service had already contacted a vacuum truck for cleanup and was working prior to our arrival. The Leominster Police Department was on scene providing traffic control as the speedy dry and booms were partially in the roadway. Initially, I called for M4 to bring supplemental damming, diking and absorbent supplies. However, none was required. C3 arrived and contacted DEP for confirmation for proper reporting while I collected information from the driver, his truck and his trailer. DPW supervisor arrived to assess and said that a sander would be by in an hour or so to provide better traction for motors. Then we have a response from a Mr. Juan Castillo, president of DJV Oil Recycling, Inc., 645 Lancaster Street, Leominster. Good afternoon, Mr. John, and thanks for stopping by. On January 11th, 2022, around 12:00 in the afternoon, DJV Oil was loading the materials to the Peterson truck. The truck take around 3,000 GA gallons. The truck have aluminum container. The driver from Peterson and one of the DJV Oil Recycling employees were filling Peterson truck with approximately 2,600 gallons of used cook oil. They took the eyes for a send in the truck off to fill, I'm sorry, and led to spill approximately 50 gallons of used cook oil. Peterson employees and DJV took action to clean up with instant spill absorber and EP minerals oil absorbent. We also use Chemtech's BW5104 absorbent booms. Oil absorbent booms are designed to contain and absorb oil spills on the surface of water. Five-inch diameter oil absorbent booms are used to contain and absorb oil spills on retention ponds or still water. Oil absorbent boom sections are linked together by attaching snap hooks to O-rings on the end of each oil absorbent boom. The interior of the attaching snap hook to O-rings on the end of each boom, the interior of attach, oh, excuse me, the interior of the spill is cleaned up by using oil absorbent pads, rolls and sweeps. We usually put the absorbent booms around the hose just in case of any emergency. We also keep a kit of absorbent booms and instant oil absorbent sand in case of any emergency outside. We also keep on every door we use to load and unload the material. And in parentheses, also thanks for the information to upgrade the permit above, 10,000 GA will be waiting for the application. Please contact me directly anytime you have additional questions or requests. Mr. Velez, I just have a few questions and then I'm going to ask members of my committee as well if they have any questions. Give me one second. Here with me for one minute. I might have put it here. Well, I have my questions somewhere. Well, let's see if we can go from memory. So you weren't present when this happened?
No, I have an emergency since December 15.
I see. Do you know who, who came up with the 50-gallon number by any chance?
Yes, it's basically every time we work is, you know, Peterson, we ask Peterson to come, whatever we are following. But on that day, they said, you know, we have a truck... to come whenever we are followed. But on that day, they said, you know, we have a truck is not, we don't, we don't have, I'm empty truck. We have a truck with a capacity of 3,000 gallons. Usually, what I ask my guys, my worker, is to send at least 500 less than what they require to be in the same place. So we had to container. Each one of them was 3,000 gallons. So this container on the bottom, sorry, 1,500 gallon, 1,500 gallon, both of them 3,000 gallon. On the bottom, they will always, always hold 200 gallons. So the, the container will, they have like 1,300 gallon each one of them plus, you know, the two. So we, we measure what we have in both container and we, we send that. So, you know, the number come with the, with the two container that we have. We took picture. There was one from Peterson that came. They took a picture and they've, and they were able to see that on that day, we even were able to send, you know, like, let me see. Do you have a pen that I can use?
A pencil?
Sorry. Yes, please. Okay. So each one of them has 1,400 gallon. So on the bottom is about 200 gallon. One of them, I don't remember the, the number, but, you know, we were able to take picture. Peterson, they have the picture. So we, we were not able to send even the 3,000 gallon that they say that they had the capacity. So number one, the first thing I want to say, I take full responsibility of what happened there. I don't send, I don't throw any responsibility to anybody. We are 100% responsible. But the driver made a big mistake. You know, he said that he had capacity for 3,000 a gallon. We didn't even send 2,500 gallons. So we, we come with a number, with what we have and what was left in the container at the end when that.
That was 50 gallons, the difference you're saying?
Yeah, it was 50 gallon.
All right. I just, while I have you here and I appreciate you taking responsibility, you know, that goes a long way with me and I appreciate you being here this evening as well. Under our ordinances, Section 8.1.1, you're supposed to provide a notice to the counsel if there's any spill or an incident. And I know you, you weren't here, but probably designate an employee and make them aware of that for future if you're not there. Whoever's managing the facility in your absence should be aware of the parameters of license and your responsibility.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
That's number one. Number two, let me go to another issue that I'm very concerned about. I noted that there was oil in the road as well, right? So a reason why.
Not on the road, but it was close to the road, to the road.
Well, they called the sanding truck from the city. So that tells me that there was, there was material in the road and they wouldn't need the sand truck. It was very slippery. So I'm concerned about, A, children on bicycles, right? They slip on that and slide into traffic, God forbid. Motorcycles would find that extremely dangerous as well.
Yeah, correct.
And motor vehicles as well.
Correct.
So keeping that stuff out of the road is, is very, very important. And I want to make sure that I make you aware of that as well. The next point I want to raise is, you know where the catch basin is?
No.
It's a storm, they call it storm drains. It's in the street and the water goes in when it rains and it, right?
Yeah.
So the catch basin that's in front of your facility, if material gets in there, it discharges directly into
Yeah.
the Nashua River.
Exactly.
The Nashua River is on what's called the Federal 303D impaired water body. They have special designation to prevent additional contaminants from entering the Nashua River. So I, I want to make you aware of that as well.
Yes, I was, I was aware of that.
Okay. So because here in Leominster, we have a, a stormwater ordinance. It's Section 21-75. And one of the conditions that I'm gonna ask that we add to your license is that you follow the performance standards under this ordinance. Again, 21-75, okay? That will ensure that we, we don't have any additional. Do you know if there are any of those catch basin instructions on your property?
Yes, let me, let me mention that we were on the way by December 15. We were supposed to implement everything that we planned. We were supposed to be already unloading, unloading from the back because we, you know, the whole building had been made a containment area. At the same time, I brought picture of, this is a bend that, you know, the truck, you know, in case we have any spill. This is a containment that it was supposed to be implemented by that time. The last time that I, I came here to the meeting, I said that we were, that we're gonna implement something like that, that we're gonna unload from the, from the back to avoid any of those issue in case we have any spill. It's go inside, nothing outside. You know, suddenly, you know, I have a really big back situation and, you know, what we were planning to implement, I couldn't implement it, but everything is implemented. I have a picture of.
Okay.
This is like a spill. It is.
Memory?
Yeah, let me see. My memory doesn't work. It's a containment bend that is used for big truck. The truck go inside and, you know, if there is any spill, everything go inside. However, we are unloading from, inside the building. So we don't, we don't have to do anything from outside anymore. We were supposed to implement it, but, you know, because the family issue, it wasn't implemented by that time. So I really apologize. We take full responsibility, but, you know, we don't do anything from outside. Everything is inside. And in case we need it, we have that professional bend that are approved by OSHA.
So, so are these, is this containment device on the site now?
No, we, we put it when we're gonna, if we need it, but we, we do it from outside, from inside. But we, we put it if we need it and then we, we take it back. So if you see the truck inside, the truck go inside the place.
Well, I'm just, I just want to be clear. I just, maybe I'm a little confused because it says we usually put the absorbent booms around the hose just in case of any emergency.
Yes, because when I came here, we use some bends outside, but in reality, that's what we need. This is the one that you just saw. This is the bends that are professional. You know, the truck go inside this and, you know, in case on spill, it's go here. Before we were using those one that we put it around, that was the one that we use, you know, when we had the accident because we were in the process of implementing, you know, this and also loading from, from the, from inside.
So, so when, when, when are we gonna be in a position where all those containment devices?
It is implemented right now.
It's implemented now?
Yes, it is, it is 100% implemented at this time.
So, so do you know, I mean, you weren't here, but do you know if any of the material made it into the storm drains?
No, nothing, nothing. Well, I, I came, they called me, I went right away to the place. I was able to see some of the fire, you know, the farming guys. So I arrived, you know, I, I was aware 100% of the situation. I saw, you know, I, you know, I spent a couple, you know, maybe like two hours there and I, yes.
All right. Well, I. I guess, I mean, I want you to understand just really the gravity of, like I said, this, you know, I think maybe, I'm gonna, like 600 square feet of impacted area. And we're saying it was 50 gallons and DEP, the reportable limits are 55 gallons, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so I'm just, I'm just trying to like come to terms with all that.
We have the number. We have the number on my cell phone. We have the number that the driver said that, you know, was the capacity of his truck. The driver was supposed to go to, number one, again, I take full responsibility. You know, one other thing that I said to my guys, you know, it doesn't matter that you were doing your job. The driver was supposed to be, you know, on the truck, on top of the truck. The driver was there. It is our responsibility, nobody else. You know, I, I take that. However, I have the number that the driver said that he has a capacity and I have a picture of my containers are there. So I have, you know, everything in record in case it's needed.
All right. So, so I'm gonna go to members of, of my committee, but I just want you to know, I'm gonna make some recommendations. I want to try to put a couple additional conditions on the permit, on the license so that we make sure that everybody's protected, including the taxpayers here in Leominster. And perhaps what I'm looking for is an insurance policy of like a million dollars, naming the city of Leominster as the indemnified party. It's a common practice. And I don't want to end this in a situation where we have this problem if we, you know, God forbid, we have another problem. I don't want the taxpayers end up having to clean it up.
Yeah, we are, we are, no, you understand. I understand 100%. We are.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we are, you know, implementing everything as it were planned. We are, you know, loading from inside the place and we, you know, the whole building has may, been made a containment area. You know, we were supposed to do it before that, but sadly we, yeah.
All right. Well, it's, okay. So before I do turn it over, I just want to say, you know, and Leominster has a history of being very friendly to businesses. We, I think we all want to see businesses come here, employ people and expand, do well. We really do. We really want to see you succeed. And, but at the same time, we have a responsibility to neighbors, to taxpayers, to the taxpayers and everybody else. And that's why we called you in tonight.
Yes.
And again, I appreciate you coming. And at this point, Mr. President, I'd like to go to members of my committee, Counselor Bodanza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Velez, does Juan Castillo have a relationship to DJV Oil Recycling right now?
Yes, he is still, we also, you know, I, I have an emergency and I had to ask him to, you know, come and take full responsibility of everything there. He is still in DJV, yes.
What, what is his job function? What is he doing?
Right now, he's a chief, you know, he's, he's, when I'm not there, he's the one in charge. But I'm coming back, you know, I'm not spending. You know, he, he's the one managing the work and, you know, my customer, everything. But, you know, I, I came back.
He, he wasn't ever officially elected the president of your corporation?
I, I asked him. Okay, let me, let me explain. On January, on December 15, my daughter have a horrible accident. She is still in coma, really difficult situation. So, you know, my mind wasn't, you know, is not right yet. So I need to ask him, you know, I worked with him for so many years, I know him. So I asked him to take full responsibility on everything. I didn't know, you know, you know, when I was coming back. So I asked him to do it. Yeah, but he is still working and now he's taking a, you know, a specific role now that I'm coming back.
Okay, but he, but he's not an officer of your company, right?
Yeah, he is an officer.
All right. Well, your articles at the state level don't reflect that.
Yes, once again, you are correct. I don't want to make this as something that I want to hold to defend is in any way, you know, something horrible happened.
Yeah, I understand. You had to take quick action and
Exactly.
and he's, he's filling in for you.
Exactly. So there is, there is a couple thing. For example, we were supposed to be doing a lot of things the way how we planning. Everything was planned, you know, I couldn't do it. So I just think this is something that we're gonna be correcting.
Okay. 61 Fremont Street in Worcester. What, what's there? What's located there?
It was the, the place where we used to be.
And you list that on your Articles of Organization as the address of your registered agent. Did you do business there at one point?
Yes, yes.
Who, who's the landlord there? Who's the owner of that property?
It's Steve.
Okay. Is that, is that connected to Peterson Oil?
I don't know.
No? Okay. Do you sell oil to anybody other than Peterson Oil?
No, at this moment, I don't need it. You know, I have a lot of buyer that, you know, call me all the time. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for coming in this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Bodanza. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Mr. Velez, thank you for coming in. I just have a couple of questions. When we, when you spoke about the incident that happened, are you saying that the, the Peterson truck didn't have the capacity? Was it an overfill?
You know, they, they sent us a text message with the capacity. I asked them, what is the capacity of your truck all the time? They say 5,000, 7,000 or whatever. At that moment, on that day, they said we had a capacity for 3,000 gallon. When they arrived there, you know, I had the picture. I can send, you know, the picture of, you know, what we have at the end of the day plus the text message. They didn't have the capacity. You know, I, we, we take full responsibility, but they didn't have capacity. You know, it is totally our mistake.
Okay. No, I, I just wanted to clarify because when I first heard of the incident and I first read about it, it sounded like something may have disconnected or somebody just took their eye off of it. But what you're saying is they didn't have the capacity you expected them to have.
Number, number one, the way how it was supposed to be, you know, the accident, it didn't happen.
If I can, if I can, can I just stop you for one moment? It's 7 o'clock. I have to call a meeting to order and then we'll do a few things of business and we'll take a recess. We'll come right back to you. Okay? So at this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council for February 14th, 2022 to order. Please rise and join me for a pledge.
Here's the flag.
Where did the flag go?
It disappeared.
That's a fantastic question.
We, we got plenty of flags here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Now going to take a roll call of the councils in attendance, beginning with Counselor Bodanza.
President.
Counselor Cormier.
President.
Counselor Ardinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Schalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deegan.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. All nine members are present. Does the Madam Vice President have any approval of records?
I do. I reviewed the, the minutes of the meeting from January 24th, 2022, and I find them to be in good order. And I ask that they be placed on file.
Okay. If no, there's no objection. Counselor Bodanza?
I had a couple suggested edits. First, on page one, the, I think it's the third bold paragraph, the word citing is misspelled, should be C-I-T-I-N-G instead of S-I-T-I-N-G. And then on the next page, page two, I asked, or will ask, that the following paragraph be added, as I believe it comports with my memory of the discussion. Counselor Bodanza pointed out that other zoning petitions, namely the solar and marijuana legislation, were put in ordinance form before the petition was filed with the council and that it was not a change of policy. I'd ask that that be added.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay. If not, then the minutes of January 24th, 2022 will be placed on file with those corrections. I will now ask for, entertain a motion for a recess. Counselor Bodanza, Counselor Cormier, I saw your hand. All those in favor? Okay. By a vote of nine to zero, the City Council is now in recess. And Mr. Velez, I will ask you to continue explaining your question that Counselor Cormier had.
Can you repeat, please, the question?
No, it was my comp-
No, it was my confusion. I had thought that there was a spill, something with a, you know, the pumping process, but it was just that there wasn't enough capacity, and that's what caused the overflow.
That's show our recom, we didn't have any issue inside the building. It wasn't any, everything worked perfectly. You know, according to the record, the picture, the text message, you know, everything, you know, it was a mistake, sorry, from the driver.
Okay, and do you have a policy in place, something that specifies that when a truck is being pumped out? Is there a number, is the truck driver supposed to stay there? Is someone from your facility supposed to stay there?
The, you know, it was a, it was a couple mistakes, you know, sadly the driver or me. And, you know, I, you know, I spoke with my guy, you know, I told him that he is the one, when someone go there, he is the one in charge 100% plus responsible. My, my, you know, my worker, he need to be, you know, managing all, you know, the equipment inside. The driver need to be in his position. He wasn't there. So, you know, it was my, my guy that had to call the guy and say, you need to be there, look what happened, and he closed, that's why we didn't have any issue. So it is our fault, our fault is, it's not the driver, it's our fault because, you know, my, the guy, you know, was to take charge and say, you need to be on top of there and close everything. But it was a big mistake that we, we paid the price.
Okay. Just, so I'm looking at this, the photo you provided with the truck indoors.
Yes.
So now you're gonna be doing the pumping from indoors?
We are doing that already.
Okay. And do you have anything in the building, like I see the door open? Is there any precautions there to keep, so if there's a leak in the building, it's not getting outside?
Yes, for example, on, on the end of the, there, they, right now, we put the spill kit, we put it right there. However, when we, when we bring the container inside, when we do, you know, the plan that we are planning to do, then we're gonna put the bins that is in the whole building. The whole building has been in case there is any spill, nothing go outside.
Okay, okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier. To go to members of the council, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yep, thank you very much. I think this is for Chief Sidle. The concern about the oil getting into the storm drain, getting into the Nashua River. In this particular situation, I was reading Lieutenant Newton's report, and he said that the spill was in the driveway abutting the street. Doesn't make any mention of storm drains. So routinely, at the sight of a hazardous spill, is that something that the, that the fire department would look at? Immediately try to identify those storm drains and whether or not anything got into them?
Yes, correct. We actually carry these big pads that we can put over the storm drain. Or we'll dike with either speedy dry sand or, they call them pigs or the other booms. And we dike the storm drain, that's usually one of our main concerns.
Okay, so in this situation, do you know if that happened? I'm just, I wanna-
From what I'm reading, and then I also, that day, I was involved, you know, through Deputy Campagna that was talking to crews on scene, was that there was the spill, the company was there working on it, that it hadn't gotten out of an area of our concern.
Okay.
And a normal procedure is, we're, so DEP is the overseer of the spills. So we go for fire explosion hazard. Once we determine that that's not our first concern, or simultaneously is, then we worry about containing the spill. And that once we contain the spill, identify the product, contain the spill, and, you know, no fire explosion hazard, then we're a report to the DEP. So depending on the chemical, the oil, the quantity, is we would either have them come out as an emergency response, or most of the time, it's over the cell phone. We'll call and report to DEP, they call our cell phone of the person on scene. We try to give them a picture of what we see, the information we have. And then they make a determination of, does it require an emergency response? Or is it up to the company to do the cleanup? And then they have to report to DEP.
Okay, that's really helpful. So in a situation, or another, you know, example, if, if the, whatever the hazardous material was, if it did get close to or in a storm drain, that would be in the report?
So one of the, in the DEP, one of their main concerns is a waterway.
Absolutely, which in this case-
Yeah, the brook across the street.
Yep.
We actually had an incident on that very area. I was chief was transformers on mass electric pole, pole came down. And we spread booms in the brook behind the houses on the downward side that feeds the Nashua River. Believe it's the watershed for the Nashua River in that area.
Okay, good, no, thank you, that's helpful. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Not at the moment.
Thank you. Councilor Ardinger.
Hi, just to follow up on Councilor Cormier's questions. I appreciate your being here and taking full responsibility, but you indicated that you have an employee working with this, you know, the driver of the truck. But the driver of the truck is the one that's responsible for watching the truck?
The driver is, has to be all the time watching his truck. We are responsible because he was, my guy was not supposed to initiate anything until he see that the guy is 100% in his position. And if he move, he was supposed to stop everything. So that's why we take full responsibility, because, you know, the guy moved from his position. He wasn't in his position, and that's why-
Your guy wasn't in the right spot?
No, my guy was in his position, the driver not.
The driver no?
My guy had to send his, the guy back where he was to lay. You understand what I mean?
Yeah, I do, I do. Now, what is the flow rate when you're filling those trucks? Do you know how many gallons per minute of oil is going through there?
It's, it's like 300 gallon. Well, it depends. We can go from 3 to 500 gallon.
Oh, okay, per minute?
Yeah.
Yeah, so 50 gallons was literally just a few seconds, huh?
It was a second, boom, that's it.
Okay.
That's it. Because what happened is, you know, the guy is really efficient, the guy that we have, they are really efficient. He has a lot of experience, so he hides, is everywhere all the time. And as soon as he saw something, he closed, you know, everything, that's why. Plus, we have the bins around, we put the bins, you know, at that time, we put the bins around. So he was able to hold the pills and not go into the, into the other side.
Into the other side, okay, good. Now, you said that, do you currently have your building completely?
Yes.
I guess, what, isolated so that no oil can spill?
Yes, right now, we don't, we don't do it from, from our side, we do it from inside. So we don't, we don't have an issue. Plus, at the same time, we are implementing those, you know, bins that are approved by OSHA. You know, on those one, a whole truck of 10,000 gallon can go inside. In case something happen, it will, it won't go to the, to the floor.
And in the open garage door that, in this illustration, there is a berm around that, around the front of the truck?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay, all right.
Exactly.
All right, no, that's, that's good, I mean, it's, you know, I think you've answered my concerns, thank you very much.
Is that Councilor Ardinger?
Yeah.
Councilor Cormier.
Thank you very much, I guess I just have a couple of questions for the fire chief. You know, obviously, your, you know, your goal is not only to fight fires and, but it's to prevent things from happening. So, you know, it sounds like a couple of things here, you know, that we need to condition are that there'll be an operator near that at all times. And I know it was a very cold day, it was like 11 degrees. I don't know where he was, maybe warming up inside or using the bathroom or whatever. But, you know, if somebody was right there, as soon as that substance started to bubble, they'd have pulled the lever immediately, you might have had a gallon on the ground. So that's one of the concerns, is we gotta, you know, condition. And also to ensure that they're always pumping in a boomed area. Is there any other things that come to your mind as being the person that can help to prevent these things in the first place that we should do to ensure it doesn't happen again?
Usually in these incidents, one of the biggest, probably the biggest issue is usually human error. It's usually offloading and unloading. I couldn't agree more with the safeguard of having, you know, it written in the license and our permit that, you know, the driver of the truck, because he knows the operation the best, has to be there when loading and unloading, you know, offloading and loading our product. Couple is, every time you go by a gasoline station and they're unloading gasoline into the tanks, that driver has to be with those trucks. And then on simple home heating oil, they have the whistle in the vent, and that driver has to be there with his hand on the, you know, while he's filling, listening to that whistle. If he doesn't hear the whistle, he stops the valve from putting oil in because the whistle only happens if there's a vacuum and it's pressing the air through the whistle. So if, anything we can do to correct the human error, I believe that's a great safeguard.
Okay.
It is, it is part of our policy. You know, the driver have to be there, so it was a hero, a human error that happened on that day. So it's our policy, the driver need to be in his position. And, you know, my guy is the one that need to be, to take charge, I spoke with him, and tell, and send the guy, you know, this is your position. That never happened before, because there is a good communication between, you know, the driver is, is more fully, you know. Plus, they always give us, you know, the correct number. On that day, I don't know what happened, they didn't give us the correct number. So they said 3,000, it didn't take even 2,500. So, and the guy wasn't in his position. I don't like to draw anybody on the, on the, the bus, the bus? I'm sorry for my language. You know, I don't, I hate that, you know, that's not my personality. But, you know, it is a fact, I had to show, you know, the correct information. You know, take my full responsibility plus say what happened. So the driver was, was in his position. Peterson is aware, but we take full responsibility for what happened there.
Councilor Cormier, I just, you had requested information of all of our spills through the city clerk's office, I believe?
What's that mean?
In the city, was that?
Council Brady, I think, did.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed. So I had, we have spills daily, car accidents. We buy pallets of speedy dry, we're always spreading speedy dry and everything. So we have small, small quantities on a daily basis from car accidents or. As far as in the industrial type buildings, we had three last year, all in the past 12 months. Was this company on Lancaster Street, and then 320 Hamilton Street, we had two incidents there. One is, that building is Foster Tech, and then there's a electrical warehouse, supply house, and a yogurt manufacturing. Yogurt manufacturing, they use an acid in their cleaning process. And they were installing a different type of dispenser system and, or work a got some acid in their face and their eye. And, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna say something. Got some acid in their eye or whatever, so we responded over, required the state hazmat team to come. And we had DEP with an emergency response.
Chief, if I may, those, not that I want to start getting on other companies, but just in general, those other companies that you're speaking of, do they have a license for flammable from this body?
No, no, I was just talking about spills, okay.
So I want to talk about licenses that come before this body. You don't have any on record?
No, I was just trying to say what a great job we did.
I'm talking-
No, no. So anyway, we had no, no other reportable spills of, of an orders for anybody that had a license in the past 12 months.
Okay, thank you, because, yeah, because nobody's reported any, you know, since, okay.
Councilor Cormier, good?
I'm good, thanks.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep, this is for Mr. Velez. You just mentioned that Peterson Oil is aware of the problem. Are they aware of the reflection on your company and kind of the seriousness of additional conditions that will be put on your license because of their drivers?
They are aware that they, their driver make a mistake. Just that. They are aware that they are, you know, was their driver. And, you know, when the fire department went over there and they saw, they could see, you know, where was the error.
Yeah, my question is really, is Peterson Oil aware of the seriousness of the problem? And are they doing anything to train their drivers? I mean, it's one thing for you to have your personnel trained.
Yes, one of the policy that they have, also we have, is the driver need to be in his position all the time. And we, you know, we know that. You know, I am aware that, you know, it's something that they share with the driver to avoid, you know, that kind of situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Velez, let me just, if I can finish up here by, the last time you guys were in here, you had Mr. Seppi with you, your consultant, was sitting next to you. And I posed a question to him. I asked him if you had a stormwater plan in place, an SWPP, it's called a Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, SWPPP.
Yes.
And he said yes.
Yes.
Would you provide me with a copy of that?
I can do that.
Thank you, and in light of what happened, I know those SWPPP's also include emergency response plan? And you identify members of your company who are emergency response members? And those teams are supposed to meet quarterly to review the procedures? So I just want to, I'd like to see that plan, and I'm sure members of the council would too. And then I'd like to see any upgrades or any changes to the plan as a result of the incident. Because we all want to learn from our mistakes. And we want to improve, and we want to see you improve and be successful too.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Mr. Chairman, at this time, without objection, I will move to close this public hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We will, we'll take this up later in the meeting and see what the committee comes up with for recommendations, okay? Thank you. We can now return to the hearing that we were having with the police and fire chiefs at 6:15. Are there any additional questions, Council Frida, that you had on, in mind that you-
Still going, Chief was answering my questions.
Okay.
Chief, I think you were, you were done on updating us, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just to, just to comment on a couple of the things that you brought up. The comptroller over the years, I go back almost 30 years with, with that discussion. Ronnie Cormier was the chief at the time. And that was, that was a constant discussion every year, a budget time. Every council that turned over was the same discussion every year, every year, every year. We should have more people, no, we're gonna do overtime. I pretty much supported the mayor on, on the overtime issue for a long time. The department was cyclical in age. You know, you had some, some times where you had a lot of the guys, you know, in upper age level that didn't want the overtime. He's one of them. And so you had to jump in, Craig, is that it? And, you know, other times you had a lot of younger guys that, you know, really wanted the overtime. And, you know, if you look back on just some of the statistics you talked about with the ambulance, you know, 1,700 calls in 81. You know, I started in 93. It was probably a little bit more, but compared to what it is today, it's a whole different, different scenario. And a different scenario even without COVID, just conditions the way they are. The makeup of the city has changed, I mean, the, the needs have changed. I mean, the needs have changed. If you had to project the future, what would you feel is optimal for manpower? And what would you like to see in your department? We can't, we certainly can't do anything, but it's, I mean, the suggestion is on the table at least for how you feel.
Yeah. Realistically, knowing financial and all, you know, all of taking everything into account, is we need to transform into a better dedicated ALS system. We use a private company now. That may mean that the city contracts a better service or hires paramedics. Then on the fire side is an eight to 10 increase in the number of members of the fire department. So instead of having a department in the lower 80s, it's around 90 for the fire department. That's not counting if we were ever able to take that next step in supplying ALS service.
Have we ever done any, or did the comptroller ever do any statistical analysis as to the difference between adding more firefighters as opposed to the overtime? I mean, I.
So the discussions were always, it's cheaper to hire overtime and that the needs, you can't always guarantee the need, you're going to need an overtime person every single day. So if you hire a new firefighter and he's on group one, but group two has the overtime hiring. The way we are now is we have 19 people per shift. We have 19 in our minimum manning that we need to operate every day. So every day we are hiring overtime because we have injuries, illnesses, planned vacation, personal time. So we are always hiring. There isn't a shift in the last year or two where we're not hiring at least one per shift. So if we were able to hire, put on one more per shift or two more per shift, one per shift is four people, two per shift is eight people, we wouldn't have that overlap because we're always hiring anywhere between one and sometimes eight people a day. And then discussions with the mayor is if I was strong on one group and I had people out on the other group, he just wants to make sure that through the union contracts, I can move those people. And that's something I can do, but we could always, you know, have better language in a contract to allow that to happen.
I mean, I know where the mayor was coming from for years and which is why I was supportive. You know, there was always the concern that after 10 years, somebody would leave and now you're, you know, you're responsible for retirement, you're responsible for health insurance. I mean, there are a lot of issues. So, you know, it's a long-term issue with hiring someone.
One of the discussions has always been with the mayor is if you hire people and then we fall on tough times.
Right.
You may have to lay off firefighters. And I know the mayor, the city council, the fire chief, you know, we do not want to do that. So it's always easier if you pay more overtime. If you've got to make the cutbacks, you just cut back on the overtime. I think the city has, it's at a point where it's grown so much with the commerce center of this area. You know, Lemmonster's done so well in its development of the different type of industries and in the tax base that, you know, yeah, there may be, there's going to be tough times again. We've lived through, you and I have lived through three or four of them. The point I think now is the overtime is just, it's at a breaking point.
Well, when does it become a public safety issue?
Yeah.
And that applies to both departments. I mean, you know, guys get tired.
I'm not going to sugarcoat it either is we have a lot of hostile arguments trying to get guys to work, trying to come up with plans. It's actually cost friendships over there.
Well, not only that, when guys get tired, if you have, you know, two or three incidents a week, which has happened.
Yep.
You know, you've got everything from car accidents to, you know, so many different issues.
You haven't talked, we haven't talked about the opioid crisis.
Well, no.
And I said it before, I think last year's budget is my fear is the toll it's going to take on the police and fire, the young ones, of the amount of death and destruction they're seeing in that group of people. It's, you know, guys have said to me, chief, did you ever, you know, have this many, see this much death or something? And I said, you kidding me? What you guys have seen in the last five years is nothing. I mean, we've saw nothing compared to what, you know, you're seeing. I mean, they're seeing young teenagers, young adults that, we never saw that. We picked up elderly people that were at, you know, it was sad, but it wasn't, you know, the tragedy.
There's no question, the realm of your work and your responsibilities has just changed so much.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, it goes to, my concern and one of the reasons for asking you down here tonight, both of you, was a public safety issue. I mean, I'm hearing this, we're not, we're not different than other communities and everybody's kind of going through the same thing. I mean, I sit and listen to some of the other communities and I'm at these meetings and it's the same thing. It's we're worried about the overtime, we're worried about being able to fund more people, we're worried about, and even if the guys want to go and do the overtime and they're tired, they're human beings that can make mistakes. And that mistake can hurt people and it can cost us money. And if it's unnecessary, that's even worse. So, but I do have to say, we're so lucky because we do have committed people that really care about this city. And that's what's made the difference, you know, with Lemmonster is the attitude everybody has. And, but that can break at some point, you know? That can only go so far. So my last question to you would be, because I know a lot of the communities have done it, it's not a lot, but it's a little bit. Are you getting any COVID bonuses out of the opera money?
So the fire right now is in the middle of contract negotiations and that's.
Why is that a contract issue?
You talking to COVID money like to pay.
An extra $5,000 or $2,500 or whatever, an agreed number out of the mayor's office would be?
I think it's part of negotiations, I think, or it's coming after the. I honestly don't know, I'm not involved on that part. There has no been money up to yet.
I didn't think it had to be a contract issue. It isn't in some communities.
He's in the union.
Okay. Is there any other, any other questions?
I think I'm good. Thanks, guys.
Counsel Brady?
Thanks. Question to actually both the chiefs. From concept to hiring someone to get them trained, to get them on the department, how long are we talking on the fire and the police?
I'm going to defer. I'm going to let Chief Kennedy.
You want to see bad news?
I get Chief Kennedy first after two. Go ahead.
Okay.
You have good news.
Fire department wise is, like I told you, civil service. Because we're doing our own academy down at 210 Lancaster Street and we owe to Wister to do the live burns and everything, is March 15th, the list comes out, six to eight weeks, I can have the firefighters done their exams and all that in our facility, being trained. We give them six weeks of initial training, then they go on the fire truck and they're accounted for staffing. And then we spend the next year of doing a lot on the job, in-service training for the fire.
Wish mine was better. Our civil service list runs just like the fire department. It's now yearly, before it was every two years. We get a list. Unfortunately, our career as police department, since I've been on almost 27 years, this present list that we're going off of right now, I think there was 23 names, Lemmonster residents on it. And we have eight conditional offers offered out to fill around 12 vacancies, could be a little bit more. But going with background checks because of police reform, they pretty much, as we're going through these present background checks, we've had to go back and restart them because they've added new requirements, which I understand they want the best candidate available because of what's going on in the public's eye across the country. So that takes X amount of time. We were having certain patrolmen do it on patrol when we had staff. Recently, I had to pull that back because of staffing and had detectives step in with their already busy caseload to stop picking away these background checks, which they do very thorough jobs on both levels. That takes, right now we have eight conditional offices, so we're breaking them up through different academies, so we're doing background checks at different times. Could range a month, month and a half to get them all complete. Then you have to send them to occupational health for a physical, you know, blood work and stuff and a mental health check. We had a little problem with where we go through occupational down in Shrewsbury. I know they're very busy, they're like grounds zero for a lot of departments that go there. So a lot of times people won't get signed. So it'll be delayed a couple of weeks, then we miss an academy. Then we have to go through PAT tests, which is a standard test through civil service. They were, I think it's very similar, I think it's identical to you guys. Do you have the trigger pull? Do you have the dummy drag? So it's a standard test. That's just to get you to go to the academy. Then you have to do another physical agility, the Cooper Test, I believe, which is very strict now. There is, I lose academies right going to that part because they're not what they were. They're not coming in ready. Different breed, unfortunately. Then you're looking, getting academy. So I have some going right now to, in April, two to April, I'm sending them to Plymouth. I'm only sending these two gentlemen to Plymouth because they are squared away. You only see these two people for this job once in a blue moon and they're going to go the long ride to Plymouth and I think they can do it. Six-month academy. And that was 18 weeks. I would wish for an 18-week academy. So six months, hopefully they pass. They're much stricter now. I get calls from Boyle, where I have two in there right now, and they keep the finger right on their pulse so we know what they're doing and if there's any warning signs, we get notified. So right now, they're about a quarter way through. I'll see them probably around June. The other academy's in Weston, Mass. in June. I won't see them for six months. So where I am, short-staffed dramatically right now. I got no reprieve until next year if I'm lucky. I still think I'm, because I have, I'm sorry, I'm taking over. I have a lot to say. This has been tough. I've been doing this position. I do enjoy it. I'm looking at going through my second budget. Department is a good bunch of guys, but we just, we're down 12 guys. We're running shifts right now. I bid 33 this year, so it's broken up 11 on each shift, three groups, days, afternoons and midnights.
How can you be down 12 guys in function?
I've had guys just up and retire. Happens, can't control it. A lot of guys, you know, saw police reform and they went a different way. They had opportunity to retire. We had guys who moved to Florida thinking it was green of passion down there. We had some people just say, we're just changing occupations. I had people, an officer get arrested who had terminated. We just caused with the mayor for committing a crime. I have another one on extended administrative leave because I had to hire an outside company to investigate him, to be fair and impartial, for a thing he's done while he was on duty. I've had several disability retirements that are ongoing or just finishing because of the stress of the job. And at that time, trying to hire and do police reform and compliance with all these background checks, they weren't academies. You know, and they fill up, we have to file them before or back then. You could call into academy, what do you got available? Yeah, I have six. Give them the names. We're in. Very efficient. Now we have to log into a system called Akatus through the MPTC. And you can see how many names are available, I mean, number of spots, it could be 30. And by the time you register six, all of a sudden there's six left. And then all of a sudden, next day, you're on the waiting list. I don't get it, but.
Can I just, I just wanted to comment, Counsel Frida, on when you asked how many, you know, how many more individuals? I think the biggest thing that would help the fire and police is if our budget was increased and we were to hire these more, these extra bodies, they're going to take the place of the retirees in the injuries throughout the year. So that's what's really, really tough on us. Like I said, when I had an individual leave in August, for me to hire one person and run him through the academy, you know, it was cost prohibitive. With Officer Kennedy, if he could hire a pool, you know, of an extra four or five members, throughout the year, through attrition or other reasons, he's down. So it kind of keeps us going, is my way of saying it. So it's not so much that we'd have these extra people, it would just be that as they're getting trained, the places, the positions are opening up for them. And I think history's kind of shown itself is, you know, both departments have three to five people leave per year and, you know, this year with police reform and stuff, you know, he's had some more. But I think that's kind of what would take the curse off of.
Well, the police have an additional issue because so many people do not want to be police officers now.
Correct.
It's just become a negative job, unfortunately. It's hard to do and it's, it's, it's not good, the way the situation's played out. But you've always, the police department, since I've been here, has always been behind the eight ball with the number of people in the department.
Yeah, because I was, just not to cut you off, just to let you know, like, before I came here, I was just looking at like what we had bid, number of bodies from 2014 till now. I think only in 19, we got to 62, like for six months, and we've gone down since.
Okay.
I mean, I would love to get to 60. I would even do.
In 1999, we did a police study.
Yes, I remember.
Do you remember that?
I was on the job.
Your father would remember it.
I was on the job. I got four IUs on.
That was an incredible, it was done probably not for the right reason. It was done with the spat between Chief Roddy and the mayor at the time. But the information that came out of that police study was incredible. That was 20 years ago and I still have that. I reread it last year and I asked the council at that point to put it on the agenda so we could have a discussion.
Questions?
About.
Are there any more questions that we can ask?
Yeah, I am. I'm getting to that question.
All right.
Why? Because I brought up the police study? We're going to.
No, because there's other people that want to ask questions.
All right. I'll step back. Go ahead.
Counsel Arndt, I saw your hand.
If you don't mind, Chief Sidlow, you had mentioned that the figure that you came up with is that was $49. It would be the break even point between hiring a new person and using the overtime.
The overtime rate is $49 an hour for a senior firefighter. The cost for a firefighter with health insurance, what the city pays in the retirement system, what the city puts aside for OPEB is about $49.
So we're at that point right now where it's very reasonable to add a couple of extra people as you've indicated.
Correct.
So that we would have a better staffing situation. My concern, you talk about mental health issues, both of you guys, you know, your people with all that overtime have to be having some mental health issues. Don't take me wrong, but sure that they're dealing with them, but it's got to be, you know, tremendously stressful. But anyway.
It's a huge topic in fire and police, critical incident stress, mental health. You know, it's, it follows you through your personal life.
So, you know, as Counsel Frida mentioned.
It's a hidden cost to the city because the city's going to pay through the retirement system of early retirements or, you know, liability or it's had, you know, if you save a liability down the road, you can't put a cost on it today.
So, you know, I think what I'm trying to get at is, as Counsel Frida mentioned, we can't, you know, control the budget. That's not in our purview. But I think having the concept out there that it would make sense to add extra people, you said eight to 10, you know, maybe if we just shot for a number of four this year, that would be, you know, a nice, you know, a nice. that would be, you know, a nice, you know, a nice cushion for you. But again, that discussion, I think, will have to take place someplace else, but it's, I think is a valid discussion point. The other question I had, as you mentioned, the EMS, you know, not having a paramedic on.
Correct.
As you had talked about with the ambulance service, you had figures to prove that putting the extra ambulance on would be a break-even point. Would you have that same study for the EMS, putting an EMS position in? Would that be a break-even point, that it pays for itself?
I do, and I don't want to say it's a break-even, but you will recover most of the cost.
You will recover, okay.
Yeah, we can, if we do ALS, we can charge for it. The projections are there that we would pay for, I don't know, three-quarters of it.
Okay.
But we're already bringing in some of the money that's being used in the budget for those calls. So we transport all patients, the private paramedic gets in for us. So some of the money we're already collecting on the BLS side is part of that whole picture. But if you took the two million, and if we were to bring in a few more hundred thousand dollars, and you, you know, sit with the plan, it's definitely, is either going to be self-funding or not cost much from the city.
That's good information.
And I know I long-winded here. The thing our reambulance does, so we're going to do 63, 6400 medical calls this year. We're going to transport 5,000-plus patients. That other 1,000 to 1,200 calls are lift assist, car accidents with no injury, assisting the elderly. And on a daily basis, we'll get a call from someone that is an elderly person that's either fallen, and we go there with the ambulance, pick them up. We don't charge for that. A private company in another city would. So we'll either go with the ambulance or the fire truck and do these medical lift assists. When we're doing the lift assists, we're doing a medical workup. So our members by law, when they're going to, if their EMT is on an ambulance, they've got to do blood pressure and all the medical workup. So we're finding some of these people that needed lift assist have a head bleed going on. Next thing you know, we went for a lift assist, we're bringing them down to UMass for CAT scan, they're going into surgery with great results. That's a lot of the hidden service that we do as a municipal fire department, run ambulance, that you're not going to get from the private ambulance company.
Thank you. I think it's good information. Chief Kennedy, I sympathize with you. I don't know what else I can say, to be honest with you. It's just, you have a real tough road to hoe right now, so...
Yeah, I just can't see the ending in the future right now. So much uncertainty.
It takes so long. And are you losing, you said you had some people go down to Florida because they thought the grass was greener. Is there, are you losing people to other departments in Massachusetts where they think the grass is greener?
No, I have not. No one's transferring from civil service department to civil service department. Because we're all pretty, we're all in the same, in mass, we're all short. I mean, Chief Martin in Fitchburg, he might be slightly higher, last time I talked to him, but we're all fighting for academies, so he gets lucky on one end, and, you know, trying to get all the pieces to fall in line, and it just takes, like, for example, like, one doctor not to sign off something down at occupational health, and like, that's two weeks. And then all of a sudden, those Akatus numbers go down. And then, I mean, a good example, when we're trying to get people into Plymouth, Lieutenant Lee, who is overseeing our training and accreditation part of the department, he was entering them, and he's like, there was, there was three or four spots open, and when he got down to like, three, he's like, I got them all in. We're on a waitlist. Got two in, and the third one was on a waitlist. And then I took that young lady, put her in the Western Mass Academy, but now there's, state police might come calling, I might lose, we're in the process of getting in touch with her, you know, see if she's going to choose us as a state.
You do have some competition.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I think, I have three gentlemen, no men and women in my department. I think the state will get to them. They're getting deep into their numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Councilor Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Sidlow, I'd just like to remind you, as you know, as you're acutely aware, by ordinance, we're required to review these ambulance fees.
Correct.
And we've been looking at the schedule, fee schedule for everything, so you can expect a summons from us to appear.
Sounds good.
We can hammer those out. I just wanted to give you a courtesy heads-up. Thank you, thank you all for attending this evening.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Chaffetz-Effer.
Thank you very much. This is for Chief Kennedy. Earlier, you had mentioned about part of the process that is lengthy, I guess, is doing background checks, and you have detectives and other officers doing those internally?
Yes.
Is that something you can subcontract, I mean, to a company, just to offload?
It's a pretty significant price. It can be, but that's something I'd have to discuss with the mayor. That is an option. Certain, depending on the caseload, sometimes, some of our detectives, like Detective Shay, he's methodical and like a machine when he does them. When he does them, I trust them. You kind of get a good product. It really depends on the caseload. Sometimes you can, you can get like, three or four of them done pretty quick, but then sometimes it draws out problems. I could, it may be beneficial, but also when you try to track down, like, references and stuff, they're going to run into the same problems, like a private company does it, you know, playing phone tag. I get it, the pros and cons could be even, so sometimes when your own guys are doing it, they kind of put their best foot forward.
Right, no, I'm sure, I just was thinking, geez, that, you know, with your staff of 33, you know, Leominster's a really big community. I mean, I think about 11 officers on duty per shift. That makes me worried.
Well, it's, I bid 11 for days, but there's not 11 per shift.
Okay.
It's three groups.
Yep.
Four, four, five, or five, four, four on each shift. So you may have eight or nine, and then contractual obligations, you know, they're allowed time off, and then, right now, we're all right because it's cold out, so I don't know if it's going to be cold through the summer, I'm kind of hoping. But they allow time off, so once there's time off due to contractual obligations, I'm going to be in, be in the overtime.
And then the problems with getting people into the academy with the spots just, you know, disappearing, is there any way for the Chiefs Association or some other group to influence whoever's scheduling those appointments at the academies to say, look, we need more spots?
It has been brought up, but I talked to retired Chief Ferrulo, he's basically running MPTC now since he retired from Auburn PD. And I've met him a couple of times, last time I met him at the last Central Massachusetts meeting, and I requested, we need more academies. I mean, they need, they should be running, like, if Boyleson runs now, they got to piggyback one right afterwards, and NACC up in Haverhill. Not enough people around them have an academy. Some academies can run two, but he's like, you know, he only has X money, X people to run these academies, and they can't, you know, you know, put one department over another because we're all equal out there, we're all short, you know, we're all hurting, so is Fitchburg, so is Wellesley, or whoever, but unfortunately, I don't think they can play any favors to anybody. No one department's not worse than another.
No, I don't mean, I don't mean getting any kind of advantage for Leominster, I'm just thinking in terms of pooling, you know, if the Chiefs Association, you know, got together and said, look, we're down five, we need, you know, we need four people at a minimum, and if, you know, made the case, the Chiefs as a collective group, to say, look, we need more academies.
Yeah, I know it's been discussed, and I know there's future Chiefs meetings coming up that that's going to be brought up. MPTC is trying to add more sites, I know down in Southbridge, I can't recall, they bought, I don't know if it was a hotel down there they bought, but they're buying up these old workout facilities around the Commonwealth to start, try to do multiple academies, but they're not anytime ready. They're like, probably like, two years old. So there are, they are looking for the future, but they're at the ground floor right now. So unfortunately, it can be brought up, and I don't see why not. I think it'd be a discussion, but I don't know how it would go.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, all three of you for coming down, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for either these three gentlemen? Thank you guys very, very much for your patience. I know it's been a...
No, thank you for allowing us to address you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Okay, now we have a public hearing that was before the city council at 6:45, so we're running a tad bit late. The chairman of legal affairs ready for 24-22.
I am, Mr. President. Let me put my microphone on. 2422, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the planning board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans. This is regarding to ensure that all conditions of approval issued by the planning board for site plans are completed. I actually received an email this afternoon via the clerk, and it says as follows. Caitlin, I wanted to notify you that KP Law does not have their language ready for the performance guarantees for site plans. I recall that the city council was hoping to have it for tonight's meeting. According to Brian Riley, email below, he will have the language ready by Friday. I will share it with you once he provides it. Elizabeth Wood, planning director. So I would ask at this time that we give this further time, Mr. President, and ask members of my committee to weigh in. My suggestion would be to continue the public hearing on 24-22 to our next meeting, which I think is the 28th, and ask the clerk for a time.
Actually, this is going to be the 14th at 6:45 PM, so that they have a chance to meet.
Oh.
There was an issue, and we haven't gotten back a referral yet anyway, because they had to postpone their last meeting, so we have to push it even further.
All right, well, then, same recommendation, just a different date and time.
I would agree.
Okay, all right. Do you want to also go to the public too, just so that we...
Yeah, absolutely. And I just, I did want to say, before I go to the public, there was hope in a schedule a subcommittee meeting, but I don't know if we're going to have time now with the, better wait till we actually get the revised work from Coleman and Page. Again, if you mind, Mr. President, if I can check with my committee on that.
Sure.
Council of Bedanza, do you have feelings about the subcommittee meeting? Have faith that we'll have the work product?
Well, I'm not sure that we need one, honestly, but in any event, I wouldn't schedule it till we actually have a document.
Fair enough. Council of Cormier?
I agree.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
For the public?
Yeah, for the public. Is there anyone, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to petition 24-22? For the second time, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf of or in opposition to petition 24-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 24-22? Seeing none?
We're going to continue the public hearing, right?
Further time.
March 14th, 2022 at 6:45 PM.
Exactly.
And we can vote on that when we give this further time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
And now the public hearing at 6:50 PM.
All right, 6:50. Petition 20-22, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the planning board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. This is regarding overflow lots. This matter was first on our calendar in June 14th of 2021. We had a public hearing January 10th, 2022. It was continued to this evening, and the referrals from the building inspector and the zoning board of appeals are still out. So this is going the same way as the last one, Mr. President, and I'm going to ask for further time, and I would ask members of my committee, Council of Bedanza?
Yeah, I would be in accord with continuing the public hearing and giving the petition further time.
Council of Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, would you like to suggest further time with this petition as well?
Okay. We also have to go to the public on this one, too?
Ah, thank you. The same public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of or in opposition to petition 20-22? Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? Appears not, Mr. President, so I will recommend further time.
Okay, and continue the public hearing until March 14th, 2022, at 6:50 PM.
6:50.
And we'll take up that vote in session as well. Okay. Moving on to the public forum, we are now going to hold a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone to state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments to a two minutes or less timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. There is nobody signed up, so I will ask, does anybody in the audience wish to speak at the public forum? Once again, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. We are now back in session, and we will move right into communications from the mayor, beginning with C-46, Madam Clerk.
C-46, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation in the amount of $50,000 be made to the Highway Capital account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding safe routes to school appraisal.
C-46 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Okay, C-46 has been given regular course. Moving on to, we have an emergency preamble, which is C-47, and I will first ask the clerk to read what this is, and then we will have a vote to accept this as an emergency.
C-47, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation in the amount of $250,000 be made to the police department salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding overtime funding.
Okay. First, we got to have a vote to accept this as an emergency.
Sure.
I'm going to have a vote for us to have it accepted as an emergency.
I want to give a prima facie case for it. I think that really needs to be stated.
Absolutely.
So 3.9 of the charter provides that we need to, we can endorse an emergency preamble or approve an emergency preamble for peace, health, and safety of people or property. In this particular case, this is money that's needed for the police department to operate and function, and it certainly would be my position that those funds are for the interest of the peace, safety, and health of the people of the City of Leominster and their property. So I'd recommend approving the emergency preamble.
Okay, is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Council Freedon.
Yeah, just, we're going to follow this emergency preamble all the time now?
It's part of the charter. Yeah, it's part of the charter. I think it needs to be stated, and I've had this...
Well, we haven't been, that's why I was just...
I've had this discussion with prior presidents about, you know, stating some basis for the vote. I think that needs to be put out there. I think it's helpful for the public as well.
Yeah, this is definitely in there.
All those in favor of accepting C-47 as an emergency signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C-47 has been accepted as an emergency and is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Are you ready to report?
Okay, so there's a letter supporting this communication from the mayor, from Chief Kennedy, dated February 8th, 2022. Dear Mayor, although there are several factors contributing to unordinary high spikes in overtime demands primarily in short staffing levels, military leave, retirements, and lingering effects of COVID, have given rise to this request for $250,000 in additional overtime funding. funding. On the attached form, you will note that although the current balance reads differently, the live balance of $56,824 is of $56,824. We request this as an emergency preamble for one reading to cover the existing overtime costs. I think what the chief is referring to there, if you went to your Munis report and you went to page two, I think we have a report as of 210, line item 21030000, police overtime, it does show a balance of $402,371. The comptroller tells me that that's broken down or reserved for a number of items beyond just pure police overtime, including in-service training to the extent of $288,160. There are other subparts that align on him as well that reduce the number to approximately what Chief Kennedy is suggesting, just a little bit under $57,000. So, as you can tell, there isn't really enough goods in the cupboard to cover impending overtime that's been necessitated by many of the things we heard this evening in the informational meeting. So, it would be my position to approve C-47 or grant C-47. I'll ask you to check with members in my committee.
Sure, Council Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelini?
Well.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-47. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-47 signify by saying, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-47 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $250,000 be transferred from the stabilization fund to the police department salary and wages account regarding police overtime funding. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-47 has been adopted. Moving on to C-48, Madam Clerk.
C-48 Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request city council vote to accept the resolution to transfer property located at the corner of Johnson and Carter Streets.
And C-48 is referred to the chairman of finance, I'm sorry, the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Received a letter from the mayor's office today. Again, I understand we have to vote whether to accept this as an emergency preamble. My understanding is that this would.
C-48?
Is that an emergency?
No, that's not on there as an emergency.
I'm sorry.
No. I believe this is just on here for regular course, and if you want to make any referrals as well.
I'm sorry, yes. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request city council to vote to accept the resolution to transfer property located at the corner of Johnson and Carter Streets. This is for the skate park. I'm asking that this go to regular course with a referral to the recreation department, perhaps the DPW as well?
Okay. Anybody else have any other referrals? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
What about the school department? Are they on board with this?
They released it.
Yes, they did release it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they were the original holders, yeah. Okay. All right, so this C-48 has been given regular course, referral to the recreation department and the Department of Public Works. Moving on to C-49, Madam Clerk.
C-49 Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the confirmation of the permanent appointment of Arthur Alphthal to the position of Director of Emergency Management regarding three-year term beginning March 1st, 2022.
Okay, and C-49 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did receive this gentleman's resume. I would ask that we give this regular course and schedule an interview on February 28th at 6:52.
6:52 PM. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, you will get that, we don't need to take a vote on that, where you can get that scheduled with the individual. So, this has been given, C-49 has been given regular course, and we've established February 28th, 2022 at 6:52 PM for an interview. Moving on to petitions, first time on the calendar, 32-22, Madam Clerk.
32-22 Pauline Cormier, Ward Two Counselor, Susan Shalfo Zephyr, owner of Jenny's Helping Hand, and Vinda Pedrosa, owner of Vinda's Tailoring, request that the city council approve placement of a crosswalk across Mechanic Street near 52 and 54 Mechanic Street to assist patrons of local businesses' safe transit across Mechanic Street.
And 32-22 is referred to the chairman of public safety and traffic. Council Deacon? This is referred to you, if you'd like to give referrals for 32-22. No, 32-22, which is for the crosswalk. Normally, we would refer, normally, we would refer this, I think, to Traffic Division and the Department of Public Works as well. And I don't know if you have any others that you'd like to refer this to? Okay, so 32-22 will be given regular course with a referral to the Department of Public Works and the police department's Traffic Division. Council Frida?
Yes, Mr. President, just out of curiosity, why are we dealing with this? We don't have any jurisdiction. That should be relatively, that's something that we would normally just call the mayor's office or DPW. We have no jurisdiction over the crosswalk?
I agree, we don't, there is no ordinance that we can, you know, use to implement this, however, I don't have a problem if the council wants to support it, and the Ward Two Counselor and the at-large counselor can take it to the mayor with our full support, that's fine as well. And I will, I will say this, and I'll ask Madam Clerk, if you can check the public record, I don't know if it was this location or another one. I thought we had a similar position, petition in the past, and they said we didn't have enough site distance for this location, so I don't know if there's something on file that you could find or not as well.
I can pull it up, that's, we did have another one within the past couple of years similar to this.
At this location?
Not specifically at the location, but nearby.
Nearby, because it sounds familiar, so we might get the same recommendation that under the DOT, there's not enough site distance, but we'll see what we can come up with and go from there.
So, Mr. President, I guess my question would be if other counselors have crosswalks in their wards or areas, we're going to bring them to the city council and put them on the agenda? Is that what we're going to do?
They've been petitioned in the past. They have been.
No, we haven't, I haven't, we haven't had crosswalks.
I've petitioned one. It still isn't there, but I petitioned it. It's been 10 years. Is there any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, 32-22 has been given regular course with a referral to the Department of Public Works and the Traffic Division. Moving on to 33-22, Madam Clerk.
May I do this in block?
Great suggestion.
Yes, you may. 33-22 through.
36-22.
36-22, if there's no objection.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll skip down and include 38-22 and come back to 37-22, because they'll all be the same.
That's fine, yeah, they're all the same nature, absolutely.
33-22 John Andre Zajon, on behalf of Georgia's Fine Jewellers, Inc., request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 255 North Street. 34-22 Fred R. Tussinaw, on behalf of Fred's Auction, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 92 Pleasant Street. 35-22 John Andre Zajon, on behalf of House of Relics, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 1292 Main Street. 36-22 Joshua Almeida, on behalf of GameStop number 3594, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 26 Orchard Hill Park. 38-22 Joanne L. Atwood, on behalf of the Repair Palace, Inc., request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 11 Sack Boulevard.
Okay, and 33-22, 34-22, 35-22, 36-22, and 38-22 are referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, please, Mr. President.
Okay, and those will all be given regular course. Moving on to 37-22, Madam Clerk.
37-22 Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Lancaster Street National Grid, relocate one jointly owned pole on Lancaster Street beginning at a point approximately 530 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Saga Ave, and continuing approximately 20 feet in an east direction. Relocate pole number 81-84, 25 feet in southern direction from its current location. Homeowner of number 644 has requested pole relocation to propose new driveway. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may be, as we find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith mark Lancaster Street, Lomester, Massachusetts. Also seeking permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above for intersection public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Okay, 37-22 is referred to the chairwoman of public service. Council Shalfo Zephyr? I know we're still not all used to the new committees yet.
Right, no, thank you very much, regular course.
Okay, all right, and 37-22 will be given regular course. Moving on to, I'm sorry, oh, we have to, I'm sorry, thank you very much. We have to establish a public hearing for February 28th, 2022 at 6:45 PM? Okay, so, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing on 37-22 for February 28th, 2022 at 6:45 PM signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, I will be abstaining, Madam Clerk. This matter does involve my employer, and I am required to abstain. By a vote of eight to zero, the public hearing has been established. Moving on to items under finance, the financial report. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. We started the fiscal year with a balance of $19,904,603 in the stabilization account. During the course of the fiscal year, we have added an additional $29,621 in interest. We have approved or earmarked $3,573,998. To date, that includes the $312,000 that appears on our agenda this evening, leaving a balance in the stabilization account of $16,360,226. I did talk to the comptroller today to get an update relative to free cash. She told me that our Schedule A has made it through step one, which is AMI, at the Department of Revenue, with just a few questions that she was able to answer. It is now on to the second level of review in DOR, and we're hoping that it gets certified fairly soon. That is the financial report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to items under legal affairs. 20-22, excuse me, we have, we do have an item under finance. C-45, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-45 Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $12,000 be made to the city council advertising expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. At the beginning of the fiscal year, the city council expenses were budgeted at $18,830. That's distinct from the city council salaries portion of the budget, which is a different line item. That $18,830 is broken down into 10 different subcategories that don't appear on the Munis report, but are carried that way. The advertising account was originally forecast at $12,000. That has been entirely expended. The clerk does have the authority to realign those 10 subparts within the contract, oh, sorry, within the city council expense account. As you know, the clerk did provide us all with a breakdown of how these advertising expenses have been expended during the course of the fiscal year to date. The overwhelming, or the biggest item, is the every 10-year reprecincting report, which costs us 28.27% of the entire amount expended. I think Council Frida had a question about traffic advertising. All the traffic, including parking, expenses were 16.92% of the total amount of the 112% of the expended $12,000. Most of this is also ordinances. The ordinances covered 74.15% of those advertising costs, so nothing terribly surprising, but that's how that all works out. It's been an expensive year for legal advertising, and the clerk is going to need this money to get through the fiscal year, and it would be my position, based on all of that, that we grant C-45.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay, so it sounds like unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-45. Is there any discussion? Council Frida?
Yeah, through the chair of the finance there, I think my question was more specific to the, how much it would cost for every stop sign, or, as we did, a number of stop signs and how many we did over the past year. I think we did quite a few of them.
The clerk has reported to me with this fiscal year's figures, and I believe, looking at this quickly, there was only one stop sign, I believe, and let me see if I can find it.
I think I had asked it the last couple of years, I recall.
Yeah, I don't have that data. And let me see if I can find, this might help a little bit, because it is a stop sign, and I would assume that most of the stop signs would be similar. Well, I think I got it. I think it was Council Angelini's petition as a matter of fact.
Didn't have to be exact, I mean, if it was $890, a stop sign, we'd know.
It's about $175, I think, let me see if I can really.
It's got to be more than that.
It's on the second page, it's about four from the bottom.
Four from the bottom, thank you, Council.
Three from the bottom.
Tiny little sheet of paper.
Yes. 9420.
I still don't see it, it's unread. Oh, that page, okay. Oh, yeah, there it is, 90, yeah, $94.20. It was advertised twice, I believe, and it was, second ad was 7222 for some reason, so it looks like $176.2 expended in total, which was 1.47% of the total budget.
But that doesn't include the city solicitor to draw up the ordinance.
It doesn't.
And the legal, the legal advertisement.
That is the legal advertisement.
That's the legal ad.
Yeah, so there's two, so we legally have to publish it once for a city ordinance. That's the more expensive one typically, because it's, has the extra public hearing information on it, and depending on the size of the ordinance, stop signs tend to be smaller after, on the final reading, because it doesn't have all the extra date and time and meeting place. So, that's what the second publishing cost was, which is the 70-something dollars.
7222.
And what does Brian Riley charge us, probably $600, $700 apiece?
We asked for that. I would hope not, and that's a good question, because the ones I filed, I put them in ordinance form. He had, he had to do nothing but copy them, so.
That doesn't matter, does it?
Well, we'll find out.
I requested it, Michelle said she reached out to billing, but I never got anything back.
I will follow up on that, Counselor, and.
I just think it's something we should know, we had, we had a lot of them, and if we do have some coming up, we should know how much it costs. If we want to put more in, it would cost it.
Unfortunately, they don't send me the bills and tell me, but I did, I went with the fiscal year only so we could approve why I needed the $12,000, but all stop signs cost about that ballpark, so you know.
We'll follow up on that, and I will provide that information at a later meeting.
Okay, is there any other discussion on C-45? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-45 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-45 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, order that the sum of $12,000 be transferred from the stabilization fund to the city council advertising expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order? What's that? Roll call? Why? Oh. To come out, because why is that?
Stabilization. The stabilization transfer, but that's another kind of call.
So, we got to, we're going to have to do a roll call?
Yeah, always do.
A roll call for the order?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll do a roll call, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yay.
Counselor Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Ardinger.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Brady.
Yay.
Counselor Shafu Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Deacon.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C-45 has been, the order has been adopted. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, 20-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We had a public hearing early, a continued public hearing earlier this evening. Unfortunately, we didn't have the referrals back from the Billing Inspector and the zoning Board, so Legal Affairs had a unanimous recommendation to continue the public hearing and give this further time.
Okay, so you've heard the request. We're going to give this further time and take a vote to continue the public hearing for March 14th, 2022 at 6:50 PM. Is that correct? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 20-22 has been given further time, and the public hearing is continued to March 14th, 2022 at 6:50 PM. Moving on to 24-22, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. 24, where are we? 2422? Yep. Yeah, same situation. Mr. President, we opened a public hearing, again, a continued public hearing, and we are waiting for Brian Riley at Coltman and Page to finish drafting the ordinance for this petition, and the Legal Affairs Committee unanimous in recommending that we continue the public hearing and give this further time and establish a hearing on...
March 14th.
Yeah, March 14th.
6:45.
Thank you, at 6:45.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation to give 24-22 further time and continue the public hearing till March 14th, 2022 at 6:45 PM. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 24-22 has been given further time with a hearing of March 14th, 2022 at 6:45 PM. Moving on to items under City Property. I'm sorry? Oh, thank you. I'm glad somebody's paying attention tonight. Notice to appear. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I believe so, Mr. President. This matter is a little different than anything I've ever handled before here, but I'm going to take, certainly take a stab at it. We had a hearing early this evening with Mr. Velez, and I had made some recommendations that I'd like to probably put more, put forth more formally at this, at this point, and I probably would ask that these be drafted by the clerk and passed on to licensee, if Counsel so approves. The first thing I think I'd like to see is licensee secure a $1 million insurance policy, identifying the City of Leamster as the certificate holder, the indemnified party. I would like to also remind the licensee that he must be in compliance with our stormwater ordinance, Section 21-75. The third thing I'd like to is just merely issue a written warning for failure to comply with our ordinance, Section 8.1.1, which is providing notice to the spill to the council. And the fourth thing I'd like is what I asked for, which would be a copy of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, and any amendments to that plan as a result of the incident that occurred.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to accept those conditions, and then we'll go from there? Somebody want to make a motion?
I would like to weigh in. Maybe we could...
Okay, go ahead.
Do a little quick committee work. So, you know, I would suspect that Mr. Velez has insurance, and I don't think he needs to get a separate policy to name us as an additional insured. So, I'd like to offer him the opportunity to name us as an additional insured on his, on his existing policy. And he offered, I think, while he was here, he gave us a pretty honest, I think, appraisal of what happened. Looks like that somebody made a mistake on the capacity of the truck, and that wouldn't have been as big a problem if the truck driver had stayed with the truck. And he offered that that's part of their operational protocol, so I think that should be a condition, too, that they assure that the truck driver who's loading or offloading stay with his truck until that process is complete as an additional condition. I'm in accord with the other conditions suggested by the Chairman, and maybe you can check with Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Counsel Cormier?
I agree with Counselor Badanza. I think with making that one, actually, both suggestions, the, just to add the City of Leamster to an existing insurance policy, that's fine. And I agree with the last part, where, that it's his responsibility to make sure that his employee is there to make sure that the truck driver is there throughout the entire process. I think that's fair enough. I think that's based on what happened, and I take Mr. Velez at his word here, although he did accept full responsibility for everything. I think it was pretty clear that, that there was another party in this that dropped the ball in this case, so I think that's fair. I think that's a fair resolution to this. So, I would agree with that, with that amendment.
Okay. All right, so do we want to state these once again very clearly? Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Let me take a stab at it. We wanted to, we want the indemnification certificate identifying the City of Leamster as a certificate holder on an existing policy, and that's, that's fine with me. We would like to ensure that the driver, any third-party drivers, stay with the truck during loading or offloading. I'd like to issue a written warning and notice for failure to comply with, again, our ordinance, Section 8.1.1. And I would like the licensee to provide a copy of his stormwater pollution prevention plan, and any amendments that were made as a result of this incident.
Okay. That sound like everything? I just, I just want to point one thing out. It's 8-1 dot 1, not 8 dot 1 dot 1. It's 8, it's 8-1.
Yeah, I'm sorry. 8-1 dot 1.
Okay. All right, so does someone, so you're making that motion?
I am.
Counselor Angelini? Do we have a second to accept all of these? Counsel Cormier? All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept all of these conditions on this permit as a, as a result of this incident. Is there any questions or comments from anyone on the City Council? All set?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to entertain this notice to appear with all of those new conditions on this permit as a result of this incident. Is there, if there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Actually, I think I'm going to do a roll call vote on this, given the nature of it. Counselor Badanza?
Yay.
Counselor Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Brady?
Nay.
Counselor Shafu Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Deacon?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, and the reason why?
I have to explain them all the time, huh? Yeah. Possible conflict of interest. I don't think anybody else does, but that's all right.
We all do. What is, what is your, do you have?
Possible conflict of interest.
What is your conflict?
I'd rather not say. I don't think I have to say.
You do, because it's in our rules that you have to vote on every matter that comes before us, so I don't know what your conflict is because you're not explaining it.
I know what my conflict is.
Well, I don't.
And I don't think I have to tell you.
All right, then, under, under our rules, you're going to be recorded as a nay vote. Let me find the rule here. Rule 18. Every matter which comes before the City Council shall be put to a vote, the result of which shall be recorded. Every member of the City Council present shall be required to vote on every question coming before the City Council, unless specifically excused by reason of interest. In the event a member refuses to vote on any question or motion prior to being excused from voting by the council, his refusal shall be considered as a negative vote. I don't understand what your conflict is.
Did you just read that a possible conflict of interest is acceptable? Didn't say I have to explain the conflict of interest.
Okay, I don't know if you have a conflict, because you're not explaining what your conflict is.
Then you're questioning what I'm telling you. You're questioning my truthfulness, that I have a possible conflict of interest. I have a possible conflict of interest, and I'm not voting. You want to mark it down as a negative vote? That's completely up to you. I have a conflict. I'm not going to have a discussion about it, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
You're the President. You do what you want.
She'll be recorded as a nay vote. By a vote of seven to two, this has been adopted, and Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask that you send by certified mail, as well as regular mail, a copy of all these new conditions that must be complied with. Okay? Moving on to city, items under City Property, 31-22. Are you ready to report?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. Thank you. Petition 3122, Richard M. Marshan requests to close off the following city streets and city property in downtown Leamster to host the 29th Annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival. The festival will take place on Saturday, September 24th, 2022, and the streets affected to West Street, from the intersection of Cottage Street to Main Street, Park Street from Main Street to West Street, Main Street from Mechanic Street to Miriam Avenue, Church Street to be used for EMS only, School Street from West Street to Miriam Avenue. In addition to the city streets, the festival would also include the parking lots adjacent to City Hall, the City Hall parking lot, and the city parking lot between First Baptist Church and First Unitarian Church should also be reserved for the festival. The time of closure requested is from 6 o'clock in the morning till approximately 6 o'clock in the evening, and at the last meeting on January 24th, this was given regular course with a referral to the police, fire, DPW, and asked that the churches be notified. We received a letter from Mr. Marshan indicating that, that all the butters had been notified, and we received a referral from the fire department, but we did not receive one from the police and DPW. My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is I don't want to set precedents by, you know, waiving, what do you call it, your request for reports, but I think we've had this festival for 28 years, and we've never had a problem in having the police and fire come, police and DPW come back and say it's okay. So, my recommendation is that we grant this petition and just ignore those two referral requests.
Okay.
And I'll check with the committee.
Okay, and I will check with Counsel Deacon.
That's fine with me.
Okay, Counsel Badanza?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so you've heard, it sounds like unanimous recommendation to grant 31-22, and, you know, we'll just keep it as though, you know, if there's any, if there's any problems with any of the departments, they'll certainly work with everybody involved. You're right, we've done this many times in the past. There's never been an issue. There's nothing different this year as any other year, so if there's anything that arises, certainly, everybody will work together to get this taken care of. And the churches have been notified.
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor of, is there any other discussion on 31-22? All those in, Counsel Frida?
No.
All those in favor of granting 31-22 signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 31-22 has been granted. Moving on to items under Ways and Means, 25-22. Are you ready to report?
I am, and, Mr. President, I don't, I'm not, I don't know if we can take these on block. They have to do, okay, thank you. I tried, I'm sorry. I tried. 25-22, Diane Amidon, on behalf of Upscale Consignment, requests to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 875 Miriam Ave, Suite 133. This was given regular course on January 24th, 2022. I have reviewed the application in its entirety. The referrals are in. There's been a proof of liability insurance, proof of registering with the Mass Department of Revenue, and there, the reports from the treasurer and the police, and both come back with this individual in good standing. So, it would be my recommendation that we renew this license, and I would ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 25-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 25-22 signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 25-22 has been granted. Moving on to 26-22, are you ready to report?
Yes. 26-22, George DiJoli, might even close. On behalf of, on behalf of Hanush Jewelers, requests to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 100 Commercial Road. Again, I reviewed the entire packet. There's proof of liability insurance, registering with the Mass Department of Revenue, and both the treasurer and the police department have found this applicant to be in good standing. So, it would be my recommendation that the license be renewed, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, so it sounds like unanimous recommendation to grant 26-22. Is there any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 26-22 signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 26-22 has been granted. Moving on to 27-22.
27-22, Neil Abrinson, on behalf of Cuties, requests to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 37 Mechanic Street. Again, this was given regular course on 124, and in the packet is the proof of their liability insurance, their notice with the Mass Department of Revenue, and they are in good standing with the treasurer, the city's treasurer, and the city police department. So, it would be my recommendation that we renew this license, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 27-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 27-22 signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 27-22 has been granted. Moving on to 28.
Chairman?
Yes?
I think I, I didn't vote either way. I think I wanted to abstain on that one. That's the same address as my business, so possible conflict.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to 28-22. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
Yes. Neil Abrinson, on behalf of Cutie Patooties, requests to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 1021 Central Street. Again, I reviewed the packet, and there's proof of liability insurance, the notice to the Mass Department of Revenue, and both the recommendations, the referrals to the treasurer and the police, find this individual in good standing, so it would be my recommendation that we renew this license, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay. Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 28-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 28-22 signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 28-22 has been granted. Moving on to 29-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. Roger Cormier, on behalf of Crown Jewelers, requests to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 12 Lindell Avenue. Again, I re-reviewed the packet, and the certificate of liability insurance is present, the notice to the Mass Department of Revenue, and the letters of recommendation in good standing from both the treasurer and the police department, recording that this person is in good standing. So, it would be my recommendation that we renew the license, and I'd ask you to... So, it would be my recommendation that we renew the license, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant twenty-nine dash twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting twenty-nine dash twenty-two signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, twenty-nine dash twenty-two, what's up, has been granted. Moving on to thirty dash twenty-two, and Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I'll be abstaining from the vote on thirty dash twenty-two because I am the petitioner requesting the license.
Okay. All right. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Susan Shalfo Zephyr, on behalf of Jenny's Helping Hand Incorporated, requests to renew license to deal secondhand articles at fifty-two Mechanic Street. Again, in reviewing the packet, the certificate of liability insurance is present, and the referrals from the treasurer and the police have been referred, and this individual is in good standing. So, it would be my recommendation that we renew the license, and I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the request, you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant thirty dash twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting thirty dash twenty-two signify in usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of eight to two, I'm sorry, eight to zero, thirty dash twenty-two has been granted. Moving on to new business, we don't have any items on the agenda. Counselor Frida?
Yes, Mr. President. Just wanting to know if the Legal Affairs Committee, or if you will be instructing them to look at zoning regarding the MBTA communities in the city, for the City of Leominster. We're one of one hundred seventy-five committees. I'm sure somebody's been looking at, you know, the webinars and the workshops that have been taking place on it. It's going to be pretty important. There's a lot of money to lose if it's not done.
Okay.
So, I would suggest that we, we have something presented to us soon for a vote.
Okay. I certainly will work with the chair on that. We've been working on, you know, a lot of other things as well that we're going to be.
It's going to be done by May.
Presenting to the council, so we'll, we'll certainly, we can, something we can work on, and, and go from there. Okay. Counsel Brady?
Yes. In regards to that, that, that has substantial impact on Ward One because it's within a half-mile radius of the MBTA station. So, if anyone can keep me in the loop as much as possible so I can make sure my constituents, it's, it's very complicated, and we're going to have to take a look at it because it has long-term effects.
Counselor Angelini?
Coleman and Page sent out an email to everybody, and so I know they're, they're looking at it as well, so I'm sure they're going to be drafting, drafting ordinances to deal with this for other communities as well, so I don't think anybody's going to be blindsided by this. I have certainly read the communications from Coleman and Page regarding this, and I understand the ramifications.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other new business to come before the city council? Seeing none, old business, we have a second reading of an ordinance, which is twenty-one dash twenty-two. Is the chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
He is indeed, Mr. President. Twenty-one dash twenty-two, second reading of an ordinance. Julio Ramos, Traffic Officer, Leominster Police Department, requests to amend chapter thirteen, section thirteen dash twenty-four of the revised ordinances entitled, "No Parking on Certain Streets," to be amended by inserting the following text, "Mount Pleasant Ave., Easterly Side, from a point beginning at twenty feet from the intersection with Mechanic Street to a point of seven hundred and sixty feet from the intersection with Pine Street." This is regarding firefighting vehicles inability to maneuver with parking on both sides of the street. Mr. President, I would recommend adopting the second reading of the ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay. You've, Counselor Badanza?
I'm in accord.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree as well.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do this in roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yay.
Counselor Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Brady?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Deacon?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero, twenty-one dash twenty-two. The second reading of that ordinance has been adopted. There is no other old business to come before the city council. Counsel Frida?
Yeah. Couple of months ago, I had asked, or I think it was December, January, to get copies of the legal bills from the city solicitor. We don't have those. We're supposed to get those on a regular basis.
I know. It's something that the clerk has asked for. I used to get them in my last stint as finance chair on a regular basis, although they were made out to Counsel Cormier for two years. So, I am going to ask the city clerk, based on your.
I mean, we've been getting them for thirty years, every month, and we're supposed to get them.
That's correct. I agree.
I mean, we're, we're voting without knowing what, what the bills are.
We need them. I agree. I'll ask the clerk to please reach out again?
I'll send the third email.
Okay.
If we're not successful, then maybe we need to ask the mayor to instruct them to send it to us.
Maybe we should hold the check till we get them.
I've copied the entire mayor's office on it, so Dean is aware.
The second thing regarding the city solicitor, I've also asked that we have them come in and update us on, on some of the litigation, some of the issues, to have an executive session.
I certainly would love that.
Have they responded to that?
Not yet, but I can have another one scheduled for them because the last one we did was last year.
I think we need to do that sooner rather than later, too.
Because I believe Mr. Georgia.
People in the street are talking about it and asking us questions, and we don't know what it is. Think it, I think we need to hear it.
I'll ask them to set up a date, or at least let me some, know some in the future that works well for them, and I'll compare it to our schedule and get back to you with what they say.
Okay. I'm going to go back to that vote on, on the action regarding Lancaster Street. I'm going to request, Mr. President, that you change that vote, that I am not a nay vote. I am not participating in that.
Counsel Frida? I don't understand what your conflict is. Everybody here that has a conflict states what their conflict is, yet I have a financial interest in the property. I have an immediate family member that is employed there.
I understand what a conflict is.
Okay.
I understand that.
I understand.
And I don't need to tell you.
Then, under our rules, your vote.
Read it again.
Your vote, I'm not having an argument. Your vote, this is over with.
You don't have to, but I want that changed for the record.
This is a nay vote, okay? That's how I interpret it. I don't know what your conflict is.
Yeah, well, I'm going to challenge that.
Okay.
Because it's not a nay vote.
You may do that.
I will do that.
You are at liberty to do that, okay? Is there any other items to come under the community calendar? Seeing none, we have a tabled petition upon which action is proposed, twenty-seven dash twenty-one. This falls under Legal Affairs.
Yes, Mr. President. This is petition twenty-seven dash twenty-one. Elizabeth Wood, Economic Development and Planning Director, requests to amend the zoning orders pertaining to solar. See the attached letter? This petition originated long before I became chairman of Legal Affairs, but as we are trying to do some housekeeping, this looked like it was going to end up being tabled forever, so we'd like to take it off the table for action.
Okay, so do we have a, we ask, the chairman is asking that we take this off the table for action? Is there any discussion before we do that? Seeing none, all those in favor of taking twenty-seven dash twenty-one off the table for action signify in usual manner? All those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, twenty-seven dash twenty-one has been taken off the table for action. Mr. Chairman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, at this time, I would suggest that we give this leave to withdraw, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Badanza?
I'm okay with that.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? It sounds like we have a unanimous recommendation to give twenty-seven dash twenty-one. Is it leave to withdraw? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Leave to withdraw?
Correct.
With or without prejudice? Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr? I see your hand.
Yeah, you did. So, through the chair to the Legal Affairs chairperson. Why, why would you do that?
Why would I what?
Give it leave to withdraw? Has the petitioner asked for it to be withdrawn?
No, but there's been no request for action on it either, so it's tabled, well, let's see.
A year ago, almost.
Yeah.
My guess would be this is so far past its, its date, the advertisement issue, right?
Yeah.
We, it's, it's.
It's out of code.